Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manaus a Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tomgroudi.
Here.
Alderman Tedgroudi.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sebanek.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments in any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard this evening?
Sandra to Bill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I didn't bring my notes. I didn't come organized because frankly, I usually try to be prepared and state the facts and figures and no one really listens anyhow. So, why bother? I could address everything on here. I could talk for an hour and I'm always overrun my time. So, what I'm going to focus on is the two of the ordinance changes focused related to the closure of 10-5. Frankly, I don't care how many hundreds of thousands of dollars you throw at this housing program, strong neighborhood program, rehabilitation program. Nothing is going to change until we have real code enforcement. Frankly, that until such time, the city takes that seriously and we don't have junk vehicles sitting around and we don't have inoperable vehicles and stuff thrown about and lawns not getting mowed and people who just don't care and absentee landlords and it's the works. And it's not just my neighborhood, it's all over. And honestly, no one's going to want to invest in a neighborhood that has that problem. And what we're relying on is the residents to make the complaints. And there's enough city staff driving around and unfortunately, I think Joe Paulzine actually is trying, but when it hits administration, it's road blocked because nine times out of 10, that has to do with a commercial property. And commercial properties are like hands-off because they're so much more valuable. I don't know why, because just in my neighborhood alone, right across the street, we have a commercial business operating without a special use permit that has never had a special use permit, added to it, a junkyard that's not even permitted in an industrial zone without a special use permit. And I've been dealing with it for years and I'm sick and tired of it and I've invested way more than any of those commercial properties across the street and paid way more in taxes than any of those properties, but the residents don't count because it's a business. And that really irritates me. And our whole neighborhood, as was mentioned two weeks ago in a letter to the council, we are being, you know, punished because we were vocal in wanting a left-hand turn off of Broad Street. And we were vocal in our opposition to a brand-new bridge because we knew it was going to impact our neighborhood and the neighborhood south of us on Riverway. And it was going to impact redevelopment of our Donley site. A lot of us look at the big picture. We're not just focused on our own little selves, but the city doesn't seem to see that. And I was really irritated again with even though the ordinance was changed with the Broad Street reconstruction project to eliminate 50 feet of angle parking on Broad Street instead of restoring it to a terrace as it should be because it's a budding residential property, but Public Works decides to go ahead and pave an apron anyhow to accommodate this business that's been operating and is a public nuisance. I mean, at what point do you just throw up your hands and give up? You know, it's like people are not going to move here. People are leaving. I've had good neighbors, neighbors that invested in the downtown as business owners contribute to specialty events downtown who have left, who have sold and sold at a loss, a big loss. I could quote dollars and cents, but I won't. It's really sad. That's all I got to say. And I should just say, vote for it. It's wonderful because maybe then you'll vote against it because that's pretty much how it works. Anything I say, I can't vote along with her. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff and consultants. Director McKinney has a presentation regarding the community health survey.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be checking in with Kurt from time to time to make sure he changes the slides. But I did want to share with you our newly leased Fox Cities Community Health Survey report. The report is about 186 pages long and so I'm just going through the high-level summary of it right now, okay? So, just want to reiterate our mission. In partnership with the community, our mission is to protect and promote health and safety. Our vision is a safe and healthy community. So, none of what we find today is going to be isolated use in just the health department. I'm hoping that our broader community, including the Common Council, will be able to use this document as we prepare plans for the health of our community and move it forward. And you know the programs that we are working on currently and some of the new ones we're working on do help to advance community health, especially the communicable disease, the lead-free-by-delivery, the opioid crisis grant. Some of these were mentioned, these issues were mentioned in priorities that people brought forward as a result. And you know our Level 3 Health Department and our staffing. And if you look about the mission accomplished by, about the fourth bullet down, one of our key public health initiatives is to do a community health assessment to identify any problems or needs in the community. So, the health systems in the Fox Cities and the health departments all are required by state statutes or the Affordable Care Act to conduct a community health assessment. So, we joined together with the five area healthcare systems, which is Ascension, Aurora, Children's Hospital of Wisconsin, Partnership Community Health Center and Theta Care, along with the five area health departments, Appleton, City of Manaus, and then Calumet, Odegamee and Winnebago County Health Departments. And we all pooled our resources to commission the reports for the Fox Cities and the counties and the health departments and the health systems use it to prepare plans. We hope that when we come together to do assessment, it goes just beyond assessment into something we call collective impact. So, if there was a priority that all of the counties, the Fox Cities and the health systems did identify, we could work together to promote it and maybe move the needle on some of our toughest issues. One example is weight of the Fox Valley and that's a combination of businesses, government, health departments, health systems and the general public and it promotes physical activity and nutrition. And the report, when we look at what shapes health, you think mostly of clinical care, but it really includes health behaviors, clinical care, socioeconomic factors and our physical environment. So, our purpose is determine the health status of our residents and it's a lot like a physician taking an individual's health history and analyzing it. We analyze new and historical data that we've gathered in the past. So, this community health assessment's been done approximately every three to five years for the last decade, along with the health systems. So, we commissioned JVK Research and they developed a scientific method that would represent all adults age 18 and older in the Fox Cities. They did, for the Fox Cities, 400 randomly selected telephone interviews. They did both cellphone and landlines. They asked people questions about behavior and lifestyle changes and risk factors and disease conditions. And they asked questions of the survey respondents if they had children in their household. They asked additional questions about the children. In addition, we did about 100 stakeholder, community stakeholder interviews and member interviews. So, we actually sat down with folks and asked them and that just supported the results of our survey. What we did find is that about 47% felt their overall health was either very good or excellent and that's down a bit from 2015. 2015, it was about 56%. One of the things that we looked at was the healthcare coverage and about 99% indicated they had healthcare coverage and 89% had a physician. There were still people that reported that they had trouble, either themselves or their family members, getting medical care, dental care or mental health care. Most people reported they had a routine checkup, about 95%. And that's up significantly since 2015. And 77 reported dental checkups. In 2010, about 81%, 82% reported that they had dental checkups. So, we're kind of monitoring that trend a little bit, making sure people get, you know, the checkups that they're needing. Under health conditions, there was some good news. Fewer people reported that they had high cholesterol, blood pressure or asthma than in 2015. And in relationship to that, perhaps, we don't know for sure if there's a correlation, is that fewer people reported smoking. It was down significantly from 2010, from 9% to 15%. But our other reports, because we look at a lot of data, not just this survey, showed that e-cigarette use is on the rise. And so, we want to watch that trend because it's not safe and that message needs to get out there. I think people think it's an alternative to smoking. Another concerning point is that 11% of the respondents worry and stress about not having enough money for food or rent and 10% said that their food ran out and they couldn't afford to buy more. So, this has not changed since 2015. Physical health, people reported being more physically active. However, they also reported that they are tending to add more weight and eating less fruits and vegetables. So, those are things that we have to look at carefully to prevent cardiovascular disease, cancer, diabetes or orthopedic problems. So, in summary, these were the top 10 issues that people brought forward to, or they brought forward to us, not more than 10, I think. But what I did is looked at, you know, what is it if you were to pick one thing that you could tackle that would have an impact on chronic diseases or mental health or other items that people were concerned about? And basically, if you look at lack of physical activity and added weight and concern about affordable, healthy food, physical activity and nutrition kind of rise to the top as the things that we could prioritize as a community. I think you all have been doing that for a very long time in some of the policies that you've been making with looping the lake with trails and making the parks more accessible to everyone. So, I think those are really important and good priorities to keep working on. In addition to that, we're looking at adding, and you can flip this slide, reversing that trend in e-cigarette use, making sure that people understand it's not safe. It's not safe for adults and it's not safe for children. And then, looking at some data that we have and people raise this, is they're concerned about infectious diseases. So, we're going to be looking at especially delving into that a little bit more and looking at our communicable disease reports and infectious disease reports and making sure we tackle those tough issues. One of the tougher infectious diseases that we have to deal with is sexually transmitted diseases, especially chlamydia. And it has an impact on reproductive health, so we want to make sure that we give that its due. In addition to the priorities that I noted, we will continually commit to assisting with reducing lead hazards in homes and in an effort to reduce children's lead poisoning. So, we will commit to that. And then also, we do have our opioid crisis grant that we are working with police and fire and Gold Cross ambulance service and Unity Recovery Services. So, we have our plates about as full as they can be, but with the community's help and with, you know, other agencies' help, we feel that we can start working on some of the issues that people have identified for us. One of the great things we've done, community initiatives, is we've had a chance to shape the state health plan. We received a small mini-grant from the State of Wisconsin Division of Public Health. We are able to have three listening sessions with our citizens over the age of 55 and they are sharing what their most pressing issues are. And it's going to help inform our plans, but we're also going to be informing the state health plan. So, I think Manaus is in a unique position to help advise the state health plan on issues related to healthy aging. So, that's just one example of some of the listening sessions that we plan to do and I feel like we're in a really good position to help respond to this. The summary report is posted on our City of Manaus website. The full report, I'd be happy to provide to you upon request or any citizen that has a request to see the full report. And I just, you can go ahead. I just want to thank all of the respondents. It's no small task to answer the questions that were posed to them and it took about 18 to 20 minutes to get that questionnaire completed and there wasn't any incentive. People just were really helping us to shape, you know, our next health plan for the city and for the Fox Cities. Do I have any questions?
Alderman Sebanek.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a two-part. If you could first, for the cameras, explain about your health department, its ranking in the state and what makes it unique from, say, bordering communities like Fox Crossing or Harrison, those areas. And then, a more specific question about your key findings. You have here that you had 99% indicate that they had healthcare coverage. Can you explain how that number came about? And is that, you believe, part of, maybe because of the Affordable Care Act?
I think it is part of the Affordable Care Act and it was a question that was asked in the survey. Now, you see that there is 1% that does not have healthcare coverage and so...
I just feel that number's probably higher. That's why I'm asking, like, could you indicate, like, who was part of this survey?
Yeah.
Because I still come across a number of individuals who are in their 20s that have no health insurance. And I know that at one point, it was illegal because of the Affordable Care Act and that's why I'm wondering why, you know, why they didn't have insurance. But also, that I think it's, these numbers are higher because of the Affordable Care Act.
I think they're higher because of the Affordable Care Act and I have to say, we do have a good healthcare system here and we also have Partnership Community Health System, Health Center that sees all people regardless of their ability to pay. So, I think they've made quite an impact on people having access to services. It may seem a little high and if you, the nice thing about this report is you can look back at the trend from 2015 and you can look further back to 2010 and you can compare us with tri-county and with the state. And I'll just pull that out real quickly. And it could be the people that were randomly selected. You know, if you took another survey, it may be just a little different. So, healthcare coverage in 2010 was, you know, 6% were without healthcare coverage. So, it was lower. And it is significantly, it was higher. It's significantly lower in 2018 and I would imagine that might be because of the Affordable Care Act.
Okay. And then, my other points about explaining your health department, how unique Manaus is to have the health department compared to area communities.
I think we're very unique to have our own health department, although there are 22 other city health departments in the state and we cover a significant portion of our population as city health departments. What I see unique about Manaus is that we have the benefit of working closely with the Manaus Joint School District in providing school nursing services as well as, you know, daycare. I think that helps to reinforce the preventive messages and also helps people to get to know their health department and to feel comfortable working side-by-side with them. In addition, I think the grants that are available to local health departments come directly to your community, so you are able to take advantage of the grant dollars right here. And so, they're not spread throughout counties or other regions. I think we have a really robust suite of programs and I think they're well-funded and stable. The other advantage we have is the senior center, working with an adult population, especially with the projections for the demographics of our population getting older, living longer. We want them to be healthy, living longer. So, I think those are things that are very unique to our community and I think we're very fortunate to have the health department and I feel very privileged and proud to work for it.
What is our classification again?
We're a Level 3 Health Department, which means that we provide the full array of essential public health services. There's a Level 1, Level 2 and Level 3 and we're at the highest level.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. The second to last slide, you said you received a mini-grant from the State of Wisconsin and there's some listening sessions there.
Yes.
One you already had, the one on March 8th and March 22nd. How would the public know that you're having something like that?
Yeah. The first session was held on February 22nd and the way it's developed is that there are, it's facilitated by Christine Jacobson, our public health educator, and she's been, this particular grant allowed her to go to a full-week facilitation training. So, she's actually a trained facilitator. And they had four groups of five people at each table. She facilitated the initial session. We recorded after questions were posed exactly what the 55 and older group told us about their needs and desires and assets in the community. I think you should know that I was really surprised at how people opened up about the things they needed, but they were also very pleased with the city and the environment. You know, we have walking trails and parks and we have, we're on the water. So, they noted the assets. They also wanted to give back to the community, which was very good. So, I think we had a very robust session. We're looking forward to two more where we'll host 20 more individuals at each of the March 8th and the March 22nd. And then, there'll be a wrap-up in April where those same people will come back and see the results that we'll be sharing with the state. We did share results with the state on February 22nd. If you want to see what we gathered, I'd be more than happy to provide that and I'd welcome the opportunity to give you a full report when those sessions are done as a common council.
There's only 20 people that's allowed to go to that. The public's not invited to this?
Yes, the public is invited to this. It's a first-come, first-served. Anybody over age 55 can call the health department and sign up for the March 8th and the March 22nd. I believe the March 8th may be full, but I know March 22nd is not.
Okay. And since you have a public platform right now for the people at home, where is this held?
It's held right here at the Cini Center and there is a box lunch provided. So, we, you know, had lunch with everyone here after the...
How long is the program?
It starts at 10:08. Well, it starts at 9:30 for registration. The program starts about 10 o'clock and it gets done at noon.
Okay. And these are some pretty lengthy reports. Why weren't these put in the packet ahead of time?
Pardon me?
Why were these on our desk tonight? They weren't put in our packet?
I apologize, I didn't have the PowerPoint completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Director McKinney.
Thank you.
Seeing that there's no other questions, we'll move on to the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Sebanek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that the Common Council approve Minutes, or receive Minutes A through E and Communications F through L.
So, motion in a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda this evening has just one item, so we'll move, I'll request a motion to approve the Minutes from the Common Council of February 18th.
Move that from the consent agenda?
Go ahead.
Anyways, Mayor, I'll move at this time that we approve the Common Council Minutes of 218 of 2019.
So, motion in a second. Any discussion?
Most people won't know it. Let's move on.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item I is action items. First item's the accounts payable and payroll for February 21st through 28th. Is there a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February 21st through February 28th, 2019, in the amount of $1,194,716.45.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carrying on, roll call 8-0.
Item 2 is the beverage operators license applications. If we could have a motion for those recommended for approval at this time? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period.
2019 licensing period as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated February 27th, 2019.
There's a motion a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
There is a license recommended for denial. I will open that up to the council for their pleasure. Is Ms. Long here this evening? Does the council wish to hear from Ms. Long, or what is your pleasure at this point?
Does she have anything to say?
She has something to say, she...
Would you like to speak?
Hi, so my name is Michelle Long. I'm not really sure how this works, but I did receive my letter for why the denial would be requested, and I would like to respectfully request that you hold off on making a decision today, if that's possible. It seems there just is a miscommunication between the court order and my probation officer. So prior to being on probation, I was allowed to bartend, and I was bartending at Wilder's in Appleton, and then I came across this position at Red Liner, and I did speak with my attorney, who spoke with Shawno County, and they denied changing my conviction for it to state specifically no Class B establishment except for work. And they denied it for the purpose of saying they were leaving the decision up to my probation officer, who said she was okay with it, but that's not how her office works. They have to have the conviction changed over. So if you were to access CCAP right now, you would see that she did put in the request. They received it, and we're just waiting for the judge to fix the problem. So I don't know if we can just hold this off until the next meeting, and by then I'll be able to prove to you that what you guys are concerned about doesn't need to be a concern.
That would be the council, the pleasure of the council. If they wish to do that, we could have a motion to do so. Alderman Sevignac.
I don't have a motion, but what I want for, what was, I'm sorry, your name again?
Michelle.
Michelle. For you to understand is just because you have a license in another community, it doesn't mean that's an automatic. In Manassia, we have very strict guidelines and rules that this body set up. So just so you understand that, it's much more difficult to get a liquor license or a bartender's license, excuse me, in the City of Manassia than outside the City of Manassia.
Correct, and I actually didn't hold a bartending license for Appleton. I didn't need to because I worked with other people who had what. The point is, for the past year, I've been under the order of no Class B establishment unless for work purposes, and when they convicted me on December 19th, they forgot to add that for work purposes on my paperwork, and that seems to be throwing a big deal for my probation office. It's really just a miscommunication between the emails with my attorney and my probation officer and everything. It really just seems like a miscommunication, so they're working to fix it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that changes anything. I mean, I guess I would ask either the city attorney or the police chief if that were to occur, if she would still be under our guidelines or not.
It's my understanding that I do fall in the qualifications, and I did speak with the chief on the phone prior because I didn't want to waste anybody's time, and we ran into this situation, so...
Can we hear from the chief then on that?
If you would like to, Chief.
Yes, Chief.
I was looking at the city attorney to see if she had an insight into this, because this is kind of an oddity, because this truly doesn't fall into what your normal guidelines are.
Yeah.
But we didn't feel comfortable in giving the approval, knowing that the probation agent had their concerns. I think it's reasonable to kind of vet this thing out a little bit further, to really kind of understand what her, if the probation agent would be going along with it. The probation agent says it has to come from the judge. The judge is saying it has to come from the probation agent, so unfortunately, Ms. Long is kind of stuck in the middle.
All right, Mayor, then with that being said, I'll postpone it to our next council meeting, which I believe is the, is it the 8th?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I meant. I looked right at it, and I said the 8th. The 18th.
Second. So motion a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's perfect. Am I able to settle this if I provide all the documentation to the chief prior to get it moved quickly, or just hold off and let's do everything on the 18th?
It would need to be approved by the common council.
Has to be approved.
But if you could work out all the other issues with the chief before that, it'll be easier when it comes to the council to make their decision.
Perfect.
Just because you have that doesn't necessarily mean they'll grant the license.
Sure.
But if, all the information's there, it'll be much easier.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item K, ordinances and resolutions. The first item is ordinance two. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve O-2-19, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter Two, Article B of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to operators' license.
There's a motion a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item two is resolution four. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols? Whoops, maybe, hold on. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve R-4-19, a resolution approving an affordable housing extension through tax increment District Number Five to benefit affordable housing and improve housing stock within the City of Manassia.
There's a motion a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there discussion? Alderman Sevignac.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer at least, I have at least two amendments to this. I've also contacted both Administrative Service Director John Jacobson and Community Development Director Sam Shorter so that they're not caught off guard with my amendments. I did receive a call from Alderman Repella that asked if I would make an amendment for him, and he wanted to make sure it was done correctly, so I contacted Sam to let him know that under eligibility of properties, under G, the new section that was added for individual employees...
Hold on just a second, Alderman Sevignac. We're only approving the resolution right now? The actual plan itself that you're looking at?
Yeah.
That will come in the future. So what, what this resolution does is, do you want to explain it, Director Schrader?
Well, then that should have been explained to me, because I'm not, I'm not ready to approve unless I know that what's in this plan, we should be looking at the plan and what should be put in it before we want to go forward. I can tell you that. Go ahead, Sam, sorry.
Yeah, so basically, what was brought to the Administration Committee on, the last Administration Committee meeting, was the, the two resolutions, R-4-19 and R-5-19, as well as a draft of the Strong Neighborhoods Manassia Program. The, if you recall, the chairperson, Nichols, held the program back to the Administration Committee, and the, the rest, the two resolutions were approved to move forward. So R-4-19 would approve the last year's increment of the roughly $291,000 to go into the housing program, and then R-5-19 would approve the TIF closure as well as the excess increment to also go into that program. We realized with the, the program, obviously, the, the funds would not become available till January 1 of 2020, so there is some time to, to work out any, any necessary details that are missing, such as the details that were added as part of the conversation at the last admin committee regarding Article G, as you had just referenced, as I think a couple other just quick corrections. So again, what is on council would be to approve the affordable housing extension, putting that last year's increment into the program, and then TIF R-5-19 of actually closing the, the TIF district and putting the excess funds. So the, the proposed amendment to Article G would actually come at the admin, and this would be, this would be the funding mechanism for that program.
So until the Strong Neighborhoods program is approved, no money can be spent out of, off of these two resolutions?
Yeah, but then we have a resolution coming up that basically says we're going to close the TIF, and I don't know if I want to close the TIF unless we do have a program, and you're, this is all backwards.
We did it that way because we, we were concerned that putting this all on one council meeting was maybe a little bit overwhelming. That was why we did it that way, why it went through last week, so there was still...
Was it overwhelming for you guys? Wow, ooh, that's insulting, Mayor. That is insulting. Anyways, all right, I'll, I didn't offer an amendment yet, so I think it's backwards.
If you want to talk about the things that you want to offer, you, you can do that now? Just noting that in administration, that's when we would take those up.
Aren't we doing that, aren't we doing that in administration then, you're saying? So I guess I'll save it for administration. I guess we were a little puzzled too, because when I read the minutes too, I know that Alderman Nichols did mention that we were just going to discuss it first and that, and then we were kind of confused, and then we, we acted on it, and so I thought, okay, we acted on it. So I guess that's where I'm confused. Go ahead, Sam.
So, and I do, just do want to point out, as part of your discussion with myself, your proposed amendment to the actual funding mechanism would take place in R-5-19.
Under the next one, I realized.
I just wanted to make sure it didn't get approved.
Trust me, I, I know what I'm doing up here. I understand that. It's just that we're doing things a little backwards because maybe we don't want to do this then, you know? Like, for instance, well, I don't want to talk about what I'd like to do with the R5, but, because we're not on that. But, you know, in doing this, I just, I just think we, we handled it wrong. I'll, I'll go along the way the mayor wants to do it, that's fine. Gives us a little more time to digest and maybe come back with some other things, but I'll have more to say under the next resolution then.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm going to reiterate the same things Alderman Sevignac had mentioned. I'm not comfortable doing this until we get all this stuff ironed out. It's kind of like the steam plant thing, creating the steam plant without having the tissue mills sign contract. So now we're going to be agreeing to do this stuff, but all of our stuff, all of our ideas are not heard yet, or they're not agreeable to what we want to have done. So I'm just disappointed that we're doing this a little bit rear-end backwards. So, thank you.
If, if the council would, hold on. If it, if the council would, if it'd be the pleasure of the council, I would entertain a motion to recess at this point and go through the rest of the agendas and come back to these two items after we have the discussion on the affordable housing.
And you call into committee before we come back?
Yeah, and you can talk about the items that you would like to put on there. You can make those motions, and then we'll come back and approve these at the end of the night, if that would make people more comfortable. Alderman Sevignac?
Yeah, seeing that they are the last two items on our agenda, I guess we could do that. So at this time, I'll move that we recess into committees. Do we want to just, let me see, which was the first one?
Administration.
It is administration, so we can, we can recess just into administration and then come back to the council.
A second.
So motion a second, all those in favor?
I have it.
Opposed? We'll stand at recess. Thank you.